The City of Gunbarrel City, Texas will meet in a regular meeting in City Hall council chambers located at seventeen sixteen West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five at six thirty P. M. And I'll call the meeting to order if everyone would please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this night, these citizens, these board members, and all of our city employees and first responders. Give us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we go about our city's business. Always lay your healing hands and show grace to those that are in such need down in the hill country. May they always be in our prayers and our well wishes. Wish all those people a speedy recovery. In Jesus' name we always pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and fraud.
I will now establish a quorum. I'll have a roll call from my left, please.
Burns here.
Evans here.
Person here.
Edwards here.
We have a quorum. Citizens' communications are limited to three minutes. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one-zero-zero-seven, members of the public may speak on any topic. Comments are limited to three minutes, and no action may be taken by the council. Any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, a recitation of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. We have a citizen's comment with AmerisFaith. Can you please come to the podium, please?
AmerisFaith, Pine Bloom, Gunbarrel City. So I just want to talk a little bit about the budget. I watched the video this past weekend, and these were things that I noted. So the employee-for-four-day work week launched in October looks like a disaster to me. We heard that ninety percent of the salaried employees are still having to work on their scheduled day off. So it looks like that they actually got stiffed with the pay raise, and they still have to work anyway. It's like, management has now suggested that maybe we use reserve money to correct the mistake it made. And so I'm wondering why, if we're having problems taking care of the people we have, why are we trying to hire more people? Animal control is seventy-eight percent over budget in overtime. Maybe it's not from the four-day mess, I don't know. But maybe council ought to check specifically since the city said it didn't need extra funds in April. It's not fair to workers or residents. It looks like a mess, and it looks like we're getting smoked instead of winning. Our police officers can't get equipment, yet the city wants to hire someone to stripe the ballfields. I guess if officers can't have tasers, at least they have pickleball. So why can't we have a coalition of dads go out there and stripe it? The city manager wants an assistant. We need someone who can turn water into wine. Sales revenue is down around one percent. Lucky's is siphoning off bingo. Short-term rentals are down eighty-five percent from budget. People get paid to keep us solvent, but when it goes south, residents get blamed. Want drainage? Give us an ad valorem tax. Want safe streets? Give us a dog tax. Now the city proposes a salary study. It's just insane the amount of money that we're paying out for these things. And so the Hillsdale project looks good on paper, but the reality is, the city has to assimilate and govern new residents in a fiscally constrained environment. And we're told it's a soft buying market. So residents, again, it looks like we're getting stiffed. It's just, I would like to encourage you, leave you this thought, and that is that, when you do any of these decisions, I would like for you to think this in your mind, and that is, what do I need to do today to make my citizens' lives better? My citizens' lives better. Not the people just here in City Hall, but I'm talking about everybody, because it's not just a piggy bank to use, it's the citizens' money that you're spending. And so I'd like for you to take a lot of care and concern about what you're doing when you do it. Thank you.
Moving on, Consent Agenda six A. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following reports: June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular meeting minutes; June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, workshop minutes; and the EDC May financials. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agendas as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Burns, second.
If no further discussion, I'll take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Person, yes.
Edwards, yes.
Consent Agenda passes. New business, seven A. The Police Department Meritorious Conduct Awards will be presented this evening. Our sponsor on this will be none other than our city manager, Dr. Angie Smith.
I'm actually going to punt it to our police chief, Keith Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you for your time. I'm going to read a short letter that was presented to me by our lieutenant. It says, Chief Stevens and Captain Connie Katsoles. An incident occurred on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, involving Officers Ryan Mutina and his trainee Officer Chloe Danmeyer. That warrants your attention. The fact and circumstances relating to the incident are as followed. On Thursday, June fifth, at approximately ten A. M., Gunbarrel City Officer Ryan Mutina, field training officer, and his trainee Officer Chloe Danmeyer received a call and were dispatched to Walmart located at twelve hundred West Main on an attempted suicide in progress. The nine-one-one communications officer related that the man was armed with a handgun. Detective Adrian Ruiz and Lieutenant Simmons were at the police station and heard the call and responded as well. When the officers arrived, they were flagged down by a female who purported herself to be the wife of the man in distress. She directed them to a white pickup in the parking lot and told them that her husband was locked inside the vehicle. Officer Mutina went to the passenger side of the pickup while Officer Danmeyer made her way to the driver's door. Officer Mutina attempted to speak with the man, and the man raised a handgun, placing the barrel of the gun to, in his, placing the barrel to his head and his finger in the trigger guard. Officer Mutina shouted at the man not to do it and pounded on the window with his breaking tool against the window in an effort to enter the truck, but to no avail. While the incident was progressing, Officer Danmeyer attempted to speak to the man and gain entry into the truck through the driver's door, also to no avail. The man eventually lowered the handgun, unlocked the driver's door. It is at this time that Officer Danmeyer swung open the driver's door and pulled the man from the vehicle and placing him on the ground. The call was dispatched at ten A. M. The officers arrived at ten eight, ten oh one, or ten A. M. So they were obviously right there when the call came out. At ten oh one, subject was in custody. By the time investigators arrived at ten oh three, the crisis had been brought to a safe end. With that, they're going to be presented, both of them, with the Meritorious Conduct Award, and I'll read the citation. On behalf of the Gunbarrel City Police Department, this Meritorious Conduct Award is awarded to Officer Ryan Mutina and Officer Chloe Danmeyer. In recognition of their swift and courageous response to suicidal subject in crisis, suicide attempts of this nature are inherently volatile and present extreme danger, not only to the individual in distress, but also to responding officers. In this critical incident, Officer Mutina and Danmeyer demonstrated extraordinary professionalism, calm, and decisive action under pressure. The officer accurately assessed the imminent threat, responded with speed and precision, and successfully intervened to prevent the loss of life, with complete regard to their personal safety. Officer Mutina confronted and disarmed the individual, saving the life and preventing potential tragedy. This level of bravery and dedication to the protection of life is of the high side is of law enforcement. Officer Mutina's actions, and Danmeyer, not only reflect personal valor and also bring great credit to themselves and the Gunbarrel City Police Department. With great respect and appreciation, we honor this act of meritorious conduct. Y'all would come up, please?
Officer Mutina?
Is that him? Cut his beard off?
Thank y'all for your time. you do. Chief Stevens, for your leadership. Appreciate y'all more than you know. Seven B. A presentation of quarterly department reports, including the city treasurer, city secretary, and city planner. Our sponsor on this item will be our city manager, Dr. Smith.
I will call up our city treasurer, Mickey Rainey.
Do I click it? Yeah. Good evening. This is the financial report for fiscal year ending two thousand and twenty-five, quarter ending June two thousand and twenty-five. The city has completed seventy-five percent or nine out of twelve months of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And you can see, we are right on track with our numbers. The total budgeted revenue is five point six. The total current revenue is four point six. The total budget expense is five point six, and the total current expense is four point five. Our revenue highlights, sales tax is on target at seventy-five point three-one percent. And our total revenues total eighty point nine-three percent. This is just a chart breaking out where the revenues are coming in. Sixty-nine percent is in taxes, eleven in miscellaneous, eight percent in business and franchise, six point nine fines and penalties, four point eight license and permits, and point three-five in fees. This is the annual sales tax comparison. The orange is where we currently are, and as you can see, it's, it's been a wave of emotions since the beginning, but it's right on track where it should be. The expense highlights, our total expense is at seventy-nine point four percent. That's a little bit over the seventy-five, but our revenues are coming in at eighty, so we're still doing okay on that part. And this is the breakdown of expense. The police department is at thirty-eight percent. Fire is at fifteen. Street, eleven point nine. Administration, eleven point three. Building and code enforcement, five point five percent. Municipal court, three. Parks is three. The city treasurer is two. Animal control is two. Debt service is two, and then others would be three. This is just a highlight of all of our special funds and the ending balances of where we're at. Give you a second just to look at that. Our personnel in open positions, new hires, Police Officer Chloe Danmeyer, who you saw earlier, and our open positions, and again, this is as of June. We have a fire chief position open, two police officer positions, and two dispatcher positions. That was as of June. July, that changed, but this is as of June. These are our anniversaries for this quarter. Carol Jet has been with us for three years. Terry Mason, six. Michael Taylor, four. Ryan Mutina, who you just saw as well, two. Keith Stevens, four. Brittany Anderson, three. Connie Penya, three. Shannon Wiggins, nine. Julie Kelly, two. And Sharon Withers, one year. And that's what I have for you today. Do you have any questions?
Council questions for staff?
No. Thank you.
Miss Rainey, thank you. Next up, our city secretary, Janet Dillard.
All right. Here is a quick view of the number of meetings held the last three months. There was a total of sixteen meetings. Currently, board vacancies include one on the parks and one alternate on the B.O.A. And come October, we'll have multiple board openings on every board. The city has been advertising for these vacancies, and emails have been sent out to current members, just reminding them that their terms are going to be up. So far, we've received three applications, and interviews will take place next month. Some activities include thirty-one fulfilled open records requests over the past three months. Training for cybersecurity went out last week. This training is required by the Texas Department of Information Resources, and the deadline to complete this is August first. Staff has completed reviewing the second supplement of ordinances. This is going to go live on the website this week. We just got done reviewing that. And then also, I've been working with a property owner regarding a demo lien, and we're expecting them to pay that off this week in the amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred, fifty-four hundred dollars. Expiring contracts in the next couple of months include a certificate of deposit with Prosperity Bank, and items on your agenda tonight for consideration. And then also, the Humane Society expires the end of September, so you'll be seeing that contract come up pretty soon. And then lastly, earlier this month, the Henderson County Commissioners approved an early voting schedule for the statewide constitutional amendment election that will take place November fourth. City Hall will be a polling location, and voting begins October twentieth. There are seventeen propositions on the ballot, so I encourage you to go check them out. That can be found on the Henderson County website. And the last day to register to vote, if you're not already a registered voter, is October sixth. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Janet. Questions for staff? Counsel?
No.
If none, thank you, Janet. Next up will be our city planner, Brittany Anderson.
Good evening. I'm here to provide an overview of planning activities, development projects in the past quarter. We've had a productive few months with ongoing site plan reviews, new projects in the pipeline, and progress on several long-term developments. Let's take a look at where things stand. We currently have three major projects in progress. We have Hillsdale Phase Two. The preliminary plot was presented at a special planning and zoning meeting earlier this evening. While the commission reviewed the revisions, final approval is still pending with city council's consideration. This project previously received conditional approval and had a twenty-five-foot variance. Request denied in February. The site plan compliance is still under review, and drainage easement discussions are ongoing. Sorry. At six oh six East Main Street, it was annexed last fall and rezoned to R five in January. The preliminary plot is under staff review, and it has not been scheduled yet for a hearing. The youth activity center at one forty-two Rodney Drive, both the original and amended special use permits have been approved. The site plan is under civil review, and a variance is pending before the Board of Adjustments. With Hillsdale Phase Two remains an active project. As mentioned, the preliminary plot was reviewed earlier today by Planning and Zoning Commission, and it is going to come before you this evening for consideration. We continue to work with the developer on stormwater and easement solutions. The upcoming variance request for drainage placement underneath private roads will also need to be reviewed after this report. At six oh six East Main Street, it was annexed into the city in November of two thousand and twenty-four, and it was rezoned to R five in January of two thousand and twenty-five. The developer has submitted a preliminary plot that's currently on, under internal review. We're working through subdivision requirements, and we'll bring it forward once it's ready for the planning and zoning consideration. At one forty-two Rodney Drive, the applicant has received approval for both the original and amended special use permits. The civil site plan is underneath review. A variance is being requested, and it is scheduled to go before the Board of Adjustments on July twenty-eighth to address the size of the proposed recreational building. We've had several key projects reach completion this past quarter, showing solid momentum in developing throughout Gunbarrel City. The Infinity Cove Luxury Motel received approval on both its three-lot replat, and it is its site planned in April of two thousand and twenty-five. The project is in compliance with zoning and stormwater requirements. We are now waiting on their full submittal for building permits, which was discussed with them, that they should be sending this over to us in August. HTO located at three seventeen West Main Street, they submitted three rounds of site plans after extensive review by staff and the city engineer. The plan was found to be in full compliance, and it was approved on May twenty-second. Building permits for the project have now been officially issued. In May, city council approved a rezoning from B two to plan development for lots two R of Heritage Cove on Heritage Parkway. The project includes mixed-use development with commercial space and apartments, and we're currently waiting on the formal site Looking ahead, we have several new projects that we hope will move forward. These include a proposed dental office, site plan, and potential daycare facility on East Main Street. While they're both in the early stages of discussion and review, we do not yet have a confirmed timeline or submittals for city council's consideration. We've had preliminary conversations with developers about future projects. I did complete a meeting with Seven Brew Coffee this morning that is looking to come to Gunbarrel City as well. As those ideas develop into formal applications, I'll continue to keep council updated. And that concludes my presentation, so if you have any questions for me.
Questions for staff, counsel? If none, thank you, Brittany. Seven C. Consider and take action to approve Resolution Number R dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, authorizing the city manager to close existing bank certificate of deposit account ending zero eight three seven, expiring August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, to open a new bank certificate of deposit. I will read into the record, Resolution Number R dash two zero two five dash zero zero five, a resolution of the city council of the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, authorizing the city manager to close existing bank certificates of deposit and to open new bank certificates of deposit in accordance with the city's investment policy and applicable law, providing an effective date. Our sponsor on this will be our city manager, Dr. Smith.
If you have specific questions about the CD, Mickey would be happy to answer those. But this is something that happens on a regular basis. They close. Once they close, I don't close them, they close. Once they close, staff has ten days to renew them. We have to reinvest that money immediately. In the past, we've just kind of kept council aware of what's going on. We'll do the same this year. We're trying to get ahead of it. Because they close on the fifteenth, you guys don't meet within that ten days, so we won't have a chance to address that. The timing is different on all of them. So this resolution is just really giving me the ability to do that, and then I will keep council informed. Typically, our rates have been right there, very similar, either up a percentage or down a percentage, and we've been able to renew immediately. We never see the money. We just have the bank renew it for us. But we do only have ten days from the day that it closes, and it's not me closing it. Again, it's the bank. So we just wanted to get ahead of it this time. Instead of going backwards, I will, I will send council an email once we do this, let you know all the, all the statistics like we've done in the past. But we can get ahead of it instead of coming back and letting you know and taking action after the fact.
Counsel? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution R dash two zero two five dash zero zero five, authorizing the city manager to close the existing bank certificate of deposit account ending in zero eight three seven, expiring August the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, to open a new bank certificate of deposit.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. If I have no further discussion, I'll take a vote from my right, please.
Edwards, yes.
Person, yes.
Evans, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. Moving on in the agenda, eight, planning and zoning. Eight A, a public hearing on a request to replat ten lots, lots fifty-eight through sixty-two, owned by Jennifer M. Sandlin, and lots sixty-three through sixty-seven, owned by Brandon and Jacqueline Grayson, located in the Siesta Shores subdivision, section one, block A, in the B Metro Survey, abstract number four eighty-three, into two lots, to be known as Lot Fifty-eight R and Lot Sixty-three R. I now open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on this? If none, I will now close the hearing. Eight B. Consider and take action on a request to replat ten lots, lots fifty-eight through sixty-two, owned by Jennifer M. Sandlin, and lots sixty-three through sixty-seven, owned by Brandon and Jacqueline Grayson, located in the Siesta Shores subdivision, section one, block A, in the B Metro Survey, abstract number four eighty-three, into two lots, to be known as Lot Fifty-eight R and Lot Sixty-three R. A sponsor of this item will be our city planner, Brittany Anderson.
So I am presenting a replat application for lots fifty-eight through sixty-seven in Siesta Shores. This slide outlines the timeline for this replat application. On June twenty-fourth, a public hearing notice was sent to the newspaper. On June twenty-sixth, notification letters were mailed to the property owners within two hundred feet of the property. On July third, the planning and zoning and city council public hearing notices were published in the newspaper, ensuring compliance with the required notice period. The planning and zoning commission made recommendation for approval on July fourteenth, and tonight is the city council meeting. As part of the replat process, property owners within two hundred feet of the subject's property were notified, allowing them an opportunity to provide feedback or voice concerns. I sent out thirty-nine notification letters and received no responses. The property is The property is highlighted in yellow, and the blue circle shows the 200-foot boundary. This slide represents or presents the full picture of the proposed replat. As shown, the adjustments are designed to meet zoning requirements while ensuring compatibility with the surrounding area. The replat maintains compliance with the minimum lot area setbacks and other dimensional standards outlined in the R5 zoning district. This slide provides a zoomed-in view of the replat, allowing for a closer look at the specific lot adjustments. The detailed layout illustrates how the replat aligns with the zoning requirements, including the setbacks, lot dimensions, and overall configuration. As you see on Lot 58R, there is an existing residential home there. This slide outlines the requirements for the single-family detached residential district R5, which apply to this replat. Key requirements include a minimum lot area of 4,500 square feet, a minimum lot width of 45 feet, and a minimum lot depth of 90 feet. The required setbacks are 25 feet for the front yard, 5 feet for the side yards, and 10 feet for the rear yard. Principal structures must have a minimum floor space of 1,050 square feet with a maximum height of 35 feet. The lot coverage is limited to 45%. Accessory structures must also adhere to specific requirements, including the setbacks, height limits, and maximum size restrictions to ensure they remain proportional to the principal structure. The zoning standards help maintain consistency within the district and ensure that all developments align with the city planning goals. And this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer those.
Counsel, questions? Any discussion? If none, I will ask for a motion.
I motion to take action on a request to replat 10 lots, 58 through 62, owned by Jennifer M. Sandlin, and lots 63 through 67, owned by Brandon and Jaclyn Grayson, located in the Siesta Shores subdivision, Section 1, Block A, in the B Metro survey, abstract number 483, into two lots to be known as Lot 58R and Lot 63R.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Evan, second.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burson, yes.
Edwards, yes.
Motion passes. 8C. We now have a public hearing on a request to rezone tract 61A-1 in the B Metro survey, abstract number 483, being described as 538 Welch Lane in Gun Barrel City, Texas, belonging to Jerry L. and David R. Roddemaker from Agricultural District A to Single Family Detached Residential District R1. I open the public hearing, is there anyone to speak on this? If none, I will now close the hearing. Moving to 8D. We will now consider and take action to adopt ordinance number 02025-011, rezoning tract 61A-1 in the B Metro survey, abstract number 483, being described as 538 Welch Lane, Gun Barrel City, Texas, belonging to Jerry L. and David R. Roddemaker from Agricultural District A to Single Family Detached Residential District R1. I will read into the record, the ordinance number 0-2025-011, an ordinance of the City of Gun Barrel City, Texas, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map as heretofore amended to grant a change in zoning from Agricultural District A to Single Family Detached Residential District R1 for tract 61A-1, a 4.99 acre acres in the B Metro survey, abstract number 483, being described as 538 Welch Lane in Gun Barrel City, Texas, belonging to Jerry L. Roddemaker and husband David R. Roddemaker, being situated in the City of Gun Barrel City, Henderson County, Texas, providing a severability clause, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 for each offense, and providing an effective date. Our sponsor on this will be, again, our city planner, Brittany Anderson.
The public hearing notice was sent to the paper on June 24th. Letters were mailed to the property owners within 200 feet of the property on June 26th. Public hearing notice published in the paper for planning and zoning and city council on July 3rd. On July 14th, the planning and zoning did give recommendation for approval, and tonight, of course, is our city council meeting. This is the 200-foot boundary. I sent out eight letters, received zero in response. Here you can see that the property is outlined in yellow. The blue line shows the 200-foot notification boundary. All property owners within this area were notified as required by state law and local ordinance. This is the aerial view of 538 Welch Lane. It gives context to the request. The property currently contains an existing single-family home and is largely undeveloped. It is surrounded by similar residential and large lot parcels. The requested zoning is single-family detached residential R1, which is designed to support low-density spacious single-family development. Requirements include a minimum 10,000-square-foot lot, 100-foot width, 1,800-inch-square-foot minimum home size, and two-car garage. These standards will ensure that any new home constructed fits well within the area's character and maintains a high-quality appearance. The property is currently zoned agriculture, which is primarily intended for open space or limited residential use. The surrounding area is transitioning towards residential development. Rezoning to R1 reflects this pattern and will better accommodate the intended use of the property without disrupting the neighborhood's existing fabric. This rezoning also aligns with Gun Barrel City's comprehensive plan, which encourages low-density residential growth in areas supported by existing infrastructure. The proposed zoning promotes thoughtful infill development that complements existing homes and helps guide responsible city growth. This is the conceptual layout, showing the proposed subdivision of existing 4.99-acre tract into two residential lots, one for the existing home and one for a future home. It's important to note that the property will need to be replatted before a second home could be, can be constructed. Access would be provided through an existing drive and a proposed private drive. In conclusion, all required notifications have been completed. The request is compatible with the existing development, and it aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. The rezoning will allow the property owner to subdivide the lot with the understanding that a replat will be required prior to constructing a second home. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval of the zoning change from Agriculture A to Single Family Detached Residential R1, subject to the compliance with all optical development and subdivision regulations. And if you have any questions?
Questions for staff, council? Discussion? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
So I move that we adopt ordinance number O-2025-011, resuming tract 61A-1 in the B Metro survey, abstract number 483, being described as 538 Welch Lane, Gun Barrel City, Texas, belonging to Jerry L. and David R. Roddemaker from Agricultural District A to Single Family Detached Residential District R1.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Evan, second.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, take a vote from my right, please.
Edwards, yes.
Burson, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. Moving on. 8E. We will open a public hearing on a request from Hillsdale Development Group LP to approve a preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase Two, a 5.79-acre tract situated in the JP Brown survey, abstract number 59, for a private subdivision of 23 single-family lots and three open-space lots in the City of Gun Barrel City, Texas. I now open the hearing, is there anyone to speak on this? Ms. Weller?
My name is Kate Weller. I reside at 129 Camino Robles, Gun Barrel City. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As a Planning and Zoning Commissioner for nearly six years, Chair for three, and as a resident, I'm in favor of council's approval of both the preliminary plat and the variance requested by Hillsdale Development Group LP for Hillsdale Phase Two. Earlier this evening, at a special meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval to council with two conditions, as recommended by city staff and presented by city planner Brittany Anderson. Hillsdale will be a privately gated community with all the infrastructure maintained by Hillsdale residents. There will be no cost now or in the future to Gun Barrel residents for items such as street maintenance and sewer drains. The only current and future city resources allocated will be those of the city police and fire departments, which are the same resources allocated to all Gun Barrel City residents, neighborhoods, subdivisions, and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. If no one else to speak on this, I will now close the public hearing. 8F. Considering take action concerning a variance request from Hillsdale Development Group LP to Sections 15540B, 15540C, and 15540D1 to allow for the placement of stormwater drainage infrastructure under the private roads servicing Phase Two of the Hillsdale Development. 8G, considering take action on a request from Hillsdale Development Group LP to approve a preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase Two, a 5.79-acre tract situated in the JP Brown survey, abstract number 59, for a private subdivision of 23 single-family lots and three open-space lots in the City of Gun Barrel City, Texas, subject to the following condition: verification that a text dot access permit has been issued for access to State Highway 198, and that construction of the access and connecting roads, Hillsdale Drive, Erickson, Early Way, and Twin Creeks is complete or otherwise secured through an approved mechanism. Speaking on this will be our city planner, Brittany Anderson.
I will be presenting a preliminary plat request for Hillsdale Phase Two. And this is a private residential subdivision proposed on a 5.79-acre tract. I'll walk you through the timeline, project details, ordinance compliance, and key conditions related to this request, as well as the variance. Public hearing notice was sent to the paper on July 1st. Letters were mailed to the property owners within 200 feet of the property on July 2nd. Public hearing notice was published in the paper for the Planning and Zoning and City Council meeting on July 6th. We had the special planning and zoning meeting earlier tonight, and now the regular city council meeting. This slide shows the notification area. The development side is highlighted in yellow, while the 200-foot notification boundary is outlined in blue. All property owners within this boundary were notified of the public hearing in accordance with state law and city ordinance. I sent out eight letters. Here we have a map of the location of the Hillsdale Phase Two development. As you can see, the site is located along Highway 198 in the JP Brown survey, abstract number 59. The zoning map shows that this tract is designated as R4, which is appropriate for the single-family residential development proposed. This zoning allows the developer to move forward with the planned residential community in line with the city's long-term goals for development in this area. This map helps to place the development within the broader city layout, providing a clear understanding of its location and how it fits into the surrounding area. This is the full preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase Two. The proposed subdivision includes 23 single-family residential lots and three open-space lots across 5.809 gross acres. The layout reflects a gated private community design with internal circulation provided by a looped street network. All lots meet the R4 zoning dimensional standards. As you can see, the internal streets have been upgraded from the original proposed 26-foot pavement to a 31-foot width with concrete curbs, as shown in the typical cross-section at the bottom of the sheet. Utilities including sanitary sewer, water, and storm lines are planned within the 50-foot private right-of-way. Direction of flow arrows on the plat indicate drainage is being managed with the new underground stormwater system rather than surface ditches, which improves aesthetics and safety. The lot area tables confirm that each lot meets or exceeds the minimum size requirements for R4 zoning. This layout also includes three open-space lots. Those will be owned and maintained by the HOA per the plat notes. This slide outlines the two key conditions to the approval of the preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase Two. The first is a variance request, which requires action from city council tonight. The applicant is requesting a variance from Sections 155.40B, 155.40C, and 155.40D1 of the city's subdivision ordinance. These sections normally prohibit stormwater infrastructure from being placed beneath the roadways. In this case, the streets are private, and the stormwater system has been designed to run underground within the right-of-way. This layout has been reviewed and supported by the city engineer, given the private nature of the development. The second condition relates to access. The property is currently landlocked and depends on an access via Henderson County Roads, Hillsdale Drive, Erickson, Early Way, and Twin Creeks. Approval of the preliminary plat must be contingent on the developer attaining a text dot access permit to State Highway 198, along with either constructing or bonding for the necessary improvements. Also, I want to briefly point out, Note 6, it explains the slight discrepancy between the CAD recorded acreage of 5.809 acres and the 5.79 acres reflected in the legal descriptions. This 0.019-acre difference is due to how Henderson County calculates property boundaries and their appraisal district records based on monumental found on the ground. It does not impact zoning compliance or lot development potential. While there has been discussions about this development in the past, what we're reviewing tonight is a new development plan. This plan is independent of previous versions and includes- tonight is a new development plan. This plan is independent of previous versions and includes all necessary details for review. The property is currently undeveloped. It is zoned for residential use, and the plat complies with the city's zoning and subdivision regulations. Additionally, the project will be private gated community with 23 lots and three open-space lots. Several important engineering and design changes have been made since the original preliminary plat was conditionally approved. First, the developer has eliminated the use of open-ditch stormwater drainage, which can often pose long-term maintenance and aesthetic concerns. In its place, they've implemented an underground stormwater drainage system that will be routed beneath the proposed private roads. Second, the right-of-way width has been reduced from 60 feet to 50 feet. This is consistent with private subdivision design standards and helps to maximize the usable lot area. As a result, this right-of-way reduction, individual lot dimensions have been adjusted accordingly, but they still meet the lot requirements for R4 zoning district. Additionally, the internal street design has been upgraded. Originally planned as 26 feet wide with no curbs, a new layout increases the pave width to 31 feet, including curbing. This improvement boosts stormwater management and vehicle or safety within the subdivision. Overall, these changes enhance the development's function and appearance while maintaining consistency with the city's design standards for private subdivisions. The revised plat complies with a key element of the subdivision ordinance. These include consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, provision of utilities and emergency access, and overall lane sustainability. All technical requirements outlined in Section 155.23A have been met. The applicant is requesting a variance from sections 155.40B, 155.40C, and 155.40D1 of the subdivision ordinance. These sections were written to ensure stormwater systems are designed in a way that reduces long-term maintenance costs and limits conflicts with roads and utility lines. Specifically, the ordinance requires stormwater infrastructure to be placed outside of the paved road surface, typically behind curves or underneath green space so that the city doesn't face disruptions or costly repairs in the future. In this case, because the development is a private subdivision, the streets will not be maintained by Gunbarrel City. The developer has designed an underground stormwater system that runs beneath the private roadways. Since these roads and systems will be privately owned and maintained, the city engineer supports the design and has no objections to the infrastructure being located beneath the pavement. However, because this placement is technically noncompliant with our ordinance, city council must vote on and approve the variance in order for the plat to move forward. The second condition is a text dot access permit. The subdivision is currently landlocked, and the only way to reach it is through Henderson County roads. The text dot permit needs to be issued allowing access to State Highway 198. The developer is responsible for securing that permit and either completing or bonding for road improvements. Until that's done, the plat should remain conditional. The variance and the text dot permit are both essential steps to ensure the subdivision can be legally and safely developed without placing additional responsibility on Gunbarrel City for long-term maintenance of private infrastructure. You can see here, all storm, all storm drainage systems shall be designed in accordance with standard engineering practices as recommended by the city engineer, and this is in Section 155.40B. In Section 155.40C, stormwater management systems shall be designed to minimize future operational and maintenance expenses, reduce exposure of public investment in utility streets and other public facilities' infrastructure, and ensure long-term functionality. In Section 155.40D1, the storm drainage systems shall be separate and independent of any sanitary sewer system, and its use shall not interfere with the operation and maintenance of road networks or utility systems. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it aligns with Gunbarrel City's goals for high-quality residential development. The design includes a private streets, underground stormwater infrastructure, and adequate lot sizes, all within the R4 zoning district. We're recommending approval of the preliminary plat and associated variance to allow stormwater infrastructure to run beneath the private roads. This layout has been reviewed and supported by the city engineer. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for me. The city engineer is also here as well, and then the developers and their city engineer.
Council, questions for staff?
I got, I got a couple of questions just to put it on the record.
Go ahead.
Could I get Mr. Mundo to?
Yes.
Ask him a couple of questions?
Would you like me to go back on any of those slides?
Huh?
You want me to go back on any of those slides for the?
No.
Okay.
I know what the, he's already given me the answer, but I want it on the record. Mundo, can you tell me how the, the drainage is gonna, where it's gonna, how it's being discharged, where it's being caught, what size of pipe, and where it's being discharged at?
Yes. Excuse me. First, good evening, mayors, council, and councilman Edwards. First time we've met you. Yeah, the, all of the stormwater drainage will drain directly from the subdivision into Cedar Creek Reservoir.
And what size charge and where is it? Is it coming, is it coming on the Hillsdale property, or is it going?
All of the, all of the infrastructure is within the Phase II subdivision, and actually the Phase I subdivision as well, but speaking only with respect to Phase II, the stormwater drainage, the primary collector will be on the Lower Street or the Southernmost Street, which I believe is called Hillsdale Drive, and there'll, there'll be a reinforced concrete pipe with inlets draining the water off the street into the, into the pipe. And that, that conduit will be centered under Hillsdale, and then essentially on the north, the northerly side of a proposed boat ramp down to the lake. And the pipe will be, I believe it's 27-inch diameter initially, and then it increases to 30-inch generally as it goes down under the ramp, down the hill, so to speak, into the lake.
Thank you. I just wanted to get clarity on that.
There, there will be no stormwater runoff leaving the subdivision and entering onto private resident property downhill, because the water only goes downhill, and/or leeway onto the leeway.
Is there any, is there any wall or anything between the properties going to leadway, or is there a retaining wall or anything of that sort in the, in the plan?
The southerly border, so to speak, of the subdivision is a wall, or has a wall, that separates the existing ground elevation of the various lots around the cul-de-sac of the leeway from the subdivision finished-grade elevations, which are higher. And the, it varies, but it is essentially, it's a wall separation.
Well, I just, after me, me having a discussion with you, I just think that, that everybody's come to the table, and I thank everybody that's helped get this project going forward.
Right.
I think it's awesome.
The detail that we, that you asked about, that we just described, it'll show on the site development plan, which is now in progress and will come before planning and zoning in the next several months or so.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mundo. Any further discussion?
No.
I want to make council aware that before we take action, this will require an affirmative vote by all four members tonight, because this requires at least a 75% approval ready to pass. If you vote no, you will be asked to state your reason why, and if I have no further discussion, I will ask for a motion on 8F.
I motion to consider and take action on request from Hillsdale Development Group, LP, to approve a preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase II, a 5.79-acre tract situated in the JP Brown survey abstract number 59 for a private subdivision of 23 single-family lots.
Excuse me, Mr. Edwards. We're on 8F.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. I, you're, you're.
He's good.
Just getting ahead of us. That's okay. We're good. Go ahead with 8F.
Yeah, I motion to consider and take action concerning a variance request from Hillsdale Development Group, LP, to sections 155.40B and 155.40C and 155.40D1 to allow for placement of stormwater drainage infrastructure under private roads service, servicing, servicing Phase II of Hillsdale Development.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Burns, second.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burson, yes.
Edwards, yes.
Motion passes. 8G, do I have a motion?
I motion to consider and take action on a request from Hillsdale Development Group, LP, to approve a preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase II, a 5.79-acre tract situated in the JP Brown survey abstract number 59 for a private subdivision of 23 single-family lots and three open-space lots in the city of Gunbarrel City, Texas, subject to the following conditions: verification that a text dot access permit has been issued for the access to State Highway 198, and that construction to the access and connecting roads, Hillsdale Drive, Erickson Drive, Earlyway, and Twin Creeks is complete and otherwise secured through an approval mechanism.
I have a motion with those two conditions. Do I have a second?
Burns, second.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, vote from my right, please.
Edwards, yes.
Burson, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. I now call this meeting adjourned.